Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. And thank you all for joining us tonight. You can follow along the agenda on the screens above. There will also be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 7.1. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.1 through 12.5. Please state the Agenda Items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity of the Agenda Item is 13.1. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table at the back of the room. And each speaker will have five minutes to address the board in a time over we've shown on the screen. And with that, may I have a motion to appoint Ms. Laura Hendricks as President Pro Tem for --
Treasurer.
I'm sorry, for Treasurer Pro Tem for May 20th, 2019 Board of Education meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Do you want to call us to order, or do you want to?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Ms. Davidson?
Here.
And will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And up first tonight, our retirement recognition. And I am going to hand it over to Reverend Velardo.
Thank you, President Davidson. This is just really one of the highlights of the year because we have decided to vote no. None of you can retire, and you may leave the room now. So thank you for coming. We just really are honored to be here. I'm in just a second, in a minute, I'm going to go to the podium. I'll ask Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Hendricks to stand up front with the Board of Education. We'll be presenting each of you, just kind of a token of appreciation. But if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to read something to you from this position, so I'm facing you. Collectively, the Westerville City School District is losing 474 years of combined experience from its licensed and classified staff. Regardless of where this phase of your life's journey takes you, please know how proud we are of the work that you've done, what you have accomplished during your time here. Your legacy will be treasured for many years to come as the students whose lives you touched and guided move on to be successful adults in their own right. In addition, you have touched the lives of your peers. I know that to be true because some of your peers have told me that. Seeing the results of your work firsthand provides us with an optimistic outlook on the state of our schools, the state of our community, and the state of our country because you've touched the life of a child and have taught our future leaders well. We wish you a long, healthy, and happy retirement. This year's retirees will be honored much like a graduation. For the last several months, you may or may not know, the superintendent's office has been collecting descriptive words of you from your peers. We've deleted some of those words, which have been put into a keepsake that you will see in just a minute. Each retiree will be called up to the podium with me, and we'll ask that you stand facing the --
Audience.
Audience. Facing the audience, I should just read. So I face the audience as I share the three words that your coworkers say best describe you. I love doing this part. And then you will come forward after those, I share with you those three words, and it'll be placed up on the screen. You'll come forward and shake some hands, get some congratulations, and really get some very neat, what I'm choosing to call, parting gifts. One of the things I want to highlight is you're going to get the graphic of the words that describe you, but one of the cool things you're going to get is a coaster. Westerville City Schools, where you belong, and the Bell logo, and so made at Westerville North High School by students in the shop. So we just think that that's an extra, kind of special touch. So I'm going to go to the podium. If the folks will go up front, we will move forward. And obviously, not all retirees could be, but let me bring up the first. And again, you'll stand here, you'll face this way, okay? Chris Doolittle, Emerson, and Longfellow, come forward. And the three words that your peers said describe you best are caring, hardworking, and supportive. Chris Doolittle. Next, Michael Bell. Michael Bell from Hawthorne. Michael, your peers describe you as meticulous, dependable, and family. I like that. One more time for Michael Bell. From Huber Ridge, I didn't say that, from Huber Ridge. Your peers describe you as dependable, reliable, and dedicated. Also from Huber Ridge, Kathleen Van Wassen.
I don't think it'll be a while before you listen to me.
All right. Your peers describe you as passionate, hardworking, and thoughtful, which I think is pretty cool. Congratulations. And Susan Zimmerman from McVeigh. Susan is described by her peers as dedicated, easygoing, and empathetic. And Deborah Brenning from Genoa Middle School. Deborah is described by her peers as thoughtful, generous, and fun. I like it. Deborah Brenning. Scott Painter from Central High School. Scott's described by his peers as witty, intelligent, and dedicated. And from Transportation, Gary Case. All right, now Gary, I understand a couple of these words, but a couple of the words I'm not so sure of. Gary is described from his peers as friendly, helpful, and rodeo.
Oh, yeah. You know, just give them credit. Congratulations.
Just very briefly, we kid around a lot, and we have fun with this, and as well we should. But I can tell you from the heart of the board and the executive leadership team that we could not do what we do, and I would say, we could not be the strong school district we believe we are without the dedicated professionals that you have been. And we wish you well, and joy, and happiness, but do know that it is not easy to let go. So we wish you many blessings. Thank you for being here tonight. One more round of applause for some of our -- And at this time, unless you want to stay there and sit through the rest of the board -- she's got her drink already, and out the door. There'll be some pictures out in the hallway.
5.1, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on Monday, May 6, 2019? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Hendricks, whenever you're ready.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any reports this evening, which takes us to public comments. We do not have any public comments, which brings us to financials. 8.1, may I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for April 2019?
So moved.
Second. Do you want to tell us anything else? Okay, yeah, whenever you're ready.
President Davidson, members of the board, we are approving the financial report for the month ending April 30, 2019. For April general fund year-to-date receipts, $174,513,000. Year-to-date expenditures, $144,038,000, which left an unencumbered fund balance of All funds year-to-date receipts, $270,823,000. Year-to-date expenditures, $195,020,000, and unencumbered balance of $203,800,000.
Any questions or comments? You can call them both.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
Personnel consent agenda, may I have a motion for 9.1 through 9.10?
So moved.
Second.
And Dr. Hopkins is with us.
Good afternoon, evening, I guess now. President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, I'd like to present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. As you know, it's a fairly lengthy one this time of year, but some of the highlights that I'd like to point out for you is there, we have a total of 13 resignations from various classified teacher and classified pupil activity positions. We have a number of one-time payments for staff participating in a wide range of activities that range from professional development, curriculum development, and a wide array of professional collaboration. There is the reemployment contracts for classified administrators, licensed administrators, and teachers. We have in the employment section, a number of van drivers and supplemental help in the classified section for your review. I'd also like to point out that we do have a classified administrator who is with us this evening. I'd like to recognize for just a moment, Mr. Charles Gaston, also known as Charlie, if you don't mind standing for a moment to be recognized. He will be our new Assistant Manager of Food Services at our South Satellite location. Mr. Gaston has actually joined Westerville Schools earlier this year in August, and brings with him a wealth of management and leadership experience in a wide range of food and service, beverage service occupations throughout his tenure, both here in Ohio and across the nation. So I'd like to note that Mr. Gaston is also a graduate from the Ohio State University, and I know Kerry Dennis is here to introduce him tonight as well. So we thank both Mr. Gaston and Ms. Dennis for coming tonight, and we welcome you to our leadership team. Thank you. We also have the employment of one teacher and various individuals to summer intervention and extended services across the district. Now, I'd like to be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Hearing none. Thank you. Whenever you're ready.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes. Old business, would anyone, well, is it okay if we take this as one group?
It's okay with me.
Okay. So I'd like to ask for a motion for 10.1 through 10.5.
So moved.
So seconded.
And any comments? Ms. Hendricks, whenever you're ready.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
New business, 11.1, first reading for Policy 5113.2, School Choice Options, and Barbara Wallace will be with us.
Good evening, President Davidson, sorry, members of the board and Dr. Kellogg. We're here today to update the School Choice Options policy. This policy has been revised to reflect the reauthorization of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act through the Every Student Succeeds Act. This eliminates references to the No Child Left Behind legislation. The revision does not change the policy of school's choice options. It addresses the name of the legislation that it is referring to. It's basically a name change.
Any comments? It's okay.
No, it's nice that we're changing the name. When I saw the policy on here, I thought, yeah, let's go get it. But this is dealing strictly with procedures and the requirements that we must offer under the law as it currently exists. Wasn't that good? I've practiced all day, being quiet.
Okay. All righty. 11.2, first reading for Policy 5610, Removal, Suspension, Expulsion, and Permanent Exclusion of Students. And Mrs. Meisner is here.
Good evening, President Davidson, Dr. Kellogg, members of the board. Policy 5610, Removal, Suspension, Expulsion, and Permanent Exclusion of Students adds language from House Bill 318 that now prevents the suspension of students in grades pre-K through 3 unless the behavior falls into one of four safety exceptions. This language revision will not result in a change to our current practice. I'm happy to answer any questions.
That's important to note, Debbie, that we are already practicing what this policy, what the law now says must be done. It is, I think, important to note, I have heard some people say, does this mean that the young ones can never be suspended? And no, it does not mean that. It does still protect the classroom and the rights of all students, as well as our educators. So thank you for making sure that we're doing that.
11.3, first reading, Policy 5610.03, Emergency Removal of Students.
This particular policy, the emergency removal of students, we are adding to it the fourth permissible safety exception that would permit a student in grades pre-K through 3 to be suspended from school. Again, this policy should not result in any change to our current practice, and again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hearing none.
Thank you.
11.4, first reading, Revision of World Language Courses and Adoption of Primary Resources for Spanish and French. And Ms. Knapp is with us.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, and Dr. Kellogg. The World Languages Courses of Study were last updated in spring of 2011. The standards have changed to a much more proficiency-based approach, and these standards align with the ACTIVL standards, which are the American Council for Teachers of Foreign Languages, and their can-do statements. These statements are organized according to the interpretive, interpersonal, and presentational modes of communication. So as I dug in and worked very closely with them, I said, okay, so how should it be different? And they said, you know, it's not worksheets, let's talk about conjugating verbs. It's how, you know, are we communicating with others, you know, and what are we learning about their culture and interacting appropriately? So it's a big shift, and they're really excited about it. So over the past two years, ASL French and 12 Spanish teachers have met to revise the current courses of study to align with these new standards and expectations. And we also pulled in our AP Spanish teacher. We offer AP Spanish at two of our schools, as well as IB Spanish. So we pulled them in to make sure that we had that backwards alignment so that we could continue to be successful in those upper-level courses. So that was a great opportunity to look at our Level 4 course and our Level 3 course to make sure that we were meeting the needs of students when they got to their future courses. Over this past year, French and Spanish teachers reviewed and piloted resources and made the recommendation. They both selected one from the same vendor, which is Vista Higher Learning Publishers. I could tell you they're de accord for French, Encenderos, and Imagina. And I know I took Spanish in high school, but I'm not saying it probably like the Spanish teachers are, for Spanish 1 through 3, and then a different one for Spanish 4. So that is their recommendation. Are there questions or comments about?
When this, this is a tangent question. When this was revised in '11, last time it was revised in '11, and this is primarily gathering together ASL French and Spanish and working on updating materials and proficiency, and obviously, that's all great. I was caught by the sentence that says, "Westerville and Central Ohio's multicultural, multi-ethnic communities and their growing economies demand increased contact, face-to-face intervention with members of different cultures, Ohio and around the world." This is a tangent, okay? So I'm all for it, it's going to happen. Well, I don't know, maybe they're all against it. I'm for it. I would like to see us look at beyond Spanish and French and ASL. And again, you understand, really, this is tangent, this is not, this is my chance to harp on our not having enough world languages, in this person's view. And I speak up now primarily because of that sentence. Jen, French is a great language, but I see other languages as perhaps more broadly needed in the world as it's evolving around us. So I really, just take seriously, just take that for what it's worth. I just would like to see us expand that, those offerings. I love what they're doing, proficiency and updating. Okay, that's enough. Does that make sense? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Completely, yes. Just to comment, our world language teachers did write that, so I should not, don't think that I wrote that sentence that you wrote, that came straight from the world language teachers, as they wrote the philosophy around the world language.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Let them know that you really like that.
I do, that just leads it into, boy, it's just, so, yeah, thank you.
What else would you like to see?
Jen, I was wondering if you could take just a couple of minutes. We do a lot of curriculum approval, and I very much appreciate all of the work that goes into that, and you and I spend a lot of time talking about that. But I think that sometimes, because it is something that we tend to marinate in a lot, not everyone is aware of up to date on what the process looks like. So we say that, you know, the teachers meet over the course of a couple of years, and then they pilot. and then they pilot resources and so forth. But I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about what the process of curriculum development actually entails? And who's engaged?
And so back, it's been a few years now, in 2015, in the fall, we brought forth the Curriculum and Materials Adoption Process Handbook, I think, which really articulated what we do. So we do ask for volunteers of teachers. Fortunately, in this case, we were able... Fortunately, we had all of the French teachers and all of the ASL teachers, because there's three and five respectively. So we were able to pull all teachers of that content area. We're not necessarily able to do that. So we asked for volunteers. So we had 12 volunteers for Spanish come together. The department facilitators were also active, extremely active in this, and helping to recruit and inform. And so we first got together and started really digging into the standards. How have they changed? What does that look like? In looking at our course of study, where it has expectations for learning and learning targets and instructional strategies. And so it's a lot of very great conversation that teachers have with each other. I am the facilitator in that, you know, I will ask kind of deep-thinking questions, or why do you say that? Or try to navigate when maybe one person thinks it should be this, and one person thinks it should be that. But it's an extremely positive collaborative environment. They really set the schedule. I look to them to guide. Okay, do you think we need five more meetings? You think we need four more meetings? How is this going? What can I do to support you? So I'm really there as a support person. So once they have written the standards, and, you know, monthly I meet with the department facilitators, so they're going back and talking with their team, and how does this look? And do you have feedback from the other members of your department? If not, all of them can attend. We make changes throughout that process. And then we start investigating resources that support those particular standards. The other resource that they really liked was, they said, you know what? Maybe in five years we'll be to that. This was a good choice, they felt, for them. It had some, you know, it still does have a workbook-ish... Well, it has a workbook to it, but it doesn't look like the one I described earlier. And it has a level of digital content to it, which was something that they wanted. But the other, you know, one of the other ones they looked at was really digital, and they knew that they weren't quite ready for that. So they have people come out, they try out the materials, which I think is really important, to get them in front of kids, to see if that's something that's working for them. And then continued discussions, and then they determine what they feel is the best resource for them. If they need a resource at all. In some cases, we've had different, you know, we're in chemistry, and they have written their own things like that with Schoology.
I appreciate that. I think sometimes we need to remind ourselves how all of this gets here. And I am very proud of the work that's done in curriculum in this district and have been over many, many years. Our teachers are remarkable, and the way they approach the development of curriculum is extremely professional, extremely thoughtful, and very student-focused. So kudos to all involved in the particular items that are on the agenda, but kudos overall to all of our staff who are engaged in curriculum.
Thank you. And I do like that you brought up the student, because they do talk about... I mean, that is at the forefront of where are our students and how can we help them move forward? So thank you for saying that. And also, they attend Curriculum Council and speak to this... Bless you. And speak to the process. I can't get any takers to come to these meetings. I promise they won't have to talk. They're like, oh, no. So know that they are here in spirits, and they know they're meeting. But they'll come to Curriculum Council, but, you know, a board meeting, they're a little... I think I'm a little nervous. As much as I tell them, they won't have to say anything. I can't convince them.
Sorry, very intimidating.
Totally, yeah.
And we even had cake tonight.
Oh, man.
Can't even bribe them with cake.
If I would have remembered, if I would have remembered, that could have gotten... We could have gotten somebody.
Cake and punch.
Yep.
Thank you.
Forgot about the cake. Any other questions on this particular one?
So 11.5, first reading, modification of Band 8 course of study?
Yes. And so throughout the middle school design process, the music teachers had shared and discussed ways in which to improve the secondary music programming. As I mentioned, I think, a time before, they kept talking about access to students, access to students. And they were really, you know, concerned, because they felt like with Spanish and art foundations in grade 8, that that made it difficult for students, and they had to pick. So when we had an opportunity for an 8-period day, we really saw that we could use this time really effectively with our students in band. So offering this to students every day will give them a greater opportunity to grow and refine their skills and to be better prepared for high school band. We've been working closely with the middle school and high school principals over the past few months to ensure that schedules can work between the two levels, because we would like, if at all possible, for our high school band director to be a support person and a co-teacher in that...
That's really nice.
We do have the high school directors supporting them now, but it might be grade 8 band, it might be 7th grade. And so we're really trying to make that happen as much as we can. The teachers were extremely excited about this opportunity. I met with 11 of them, and they had shared it before, but I said, okay, how are we feeling? And they're like, hey, how about this course too? This course too? I said, okay, can we start with band? Can you give me a year? And I didn't want to bite off more than we could chew, and we felt that band was really a great place to start. So it is the exact same course of study. And we had a teacher speak at Curriculum Council to say, we'll be able to get to the level of depth that we're hoping for. So nothing is changing, but it says, meeting every day all year instead of meeting every other day all year. So that is the switch.
I'd like to thank you for pursuing this. I think it will really help. I'm hoping it will really help with the music program, which we've seen declining enrollment. So I think expanding this every-day opportunity throughout all the middle schools is really a positive step. So I really appreciate all your efforts and the staff, too. Thank you. Great, yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
12.1, may I have a motion for these generous donations?
So moved.
One second. Any questions or comments? Whenever you're ready.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
12.2, overnight and out-of-state field trips, may I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Looks like Westerville North cross-country is going to Hocking Hills. Any questions or comments? Whenever you're ready.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
And 12.3, may I have a motion to approve the attached lists of student candidates for graduation from Westerville Central, North, and South High Schools, pending completion of all local and state requirements?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Nope, okay.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
12.4, application for a one-time record disposal, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments on this? Nope.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
And 12.5, resolution to approve MOU with WEA for sick leave. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments here? Whenever you're ready.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any public comments this evening, which takes us to board comments. Any board comments this evening?
Congratulations to the retirees and to the graduates, soon-to-be graduates. We will see them on Saturday, and very excited to...
I'm ready.
She's warming up. It's an awesome day. Congratulations to them.
And congratulations to all of the staff and students on the completion of another successful year. So summer is, it's here.
Good stuff. I'd just like to echo, congratulations to students. Hopefully they enjoy the summer. Congratulations to our upcoming graduates, and a big thank you to the staff. Been a great year.
Yes.
I also just want to say thank you. It has been a remarkable year. There is so much good that happens in this district, and so many remarkable people engaged in this district, whether they're young people, children, or adults. It is always delightful. And handshaking season is just one way that I get to say thank you and that we all get to say bravo, kudos, and let's go again.
15.1, board will meet in regular session on Monday, June 10 at 6:00 p.m. and an executive session on Tuesday, June 18, and Thursday, June 20 at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And 16.1, may I have a motion for executive session for the purpose of consideration of the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee, student, or school official, or investigate charges or complaints against any such person?
So moved.
Okay, with that, we are going to enter executive session, and we will adjourn from there.
Everybody say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
We approve. We didn't call the roll.